That was weird.
Walkout today September 3, 2025, school committee meeting, 6:30 PM, City Council Chamber. Please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mr. Rossi?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty? Ms. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mia Ruck?
Here.
One out and six present.
Minutes 3.1, approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting of August 20, 2025, by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Conway, all in face AI. Opposed, motion passes. Section 4, permission to enter, 4.1, September 3, 2025, the motion to approve by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Martin. I just had a couple of quick questions, Superintendent, for yourself or even for Doc. The number of transportation expenditures on this one, you just take a minute just to go through them and they total over $1 million?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Let's begin, if you don't mind, with Dr. Pinto. If you'd walk us through the transportation items, please. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll add some context while we're...
I channeled my inner school community in Dougherty tonight, so I just had a couple of questions with them.
Well done. You're doing very well so far, Mr. Mayor. So, the majority of the transportation costs, as I'm looking right now, I believe, are for out-of-district students. So, they are students whose families live in Lowell, who are, because of special education needs, placed out of district. That looks to me to be the majority of the transportation cases. There are potentially other situations where the child or their family is not living in Lowell, but I don't believe there's any of those cases on tonight's PTE.
Yeah, your only question, is it a degree of need of transportation? Like, for example, the first one, Devro, was three students for almost a half a million, and then they go down a couple for Van Poel, and it's almost $300,000 for one student.
Yes, that's a good question. On that question, I believe that it depends on the type of transportation and the type of vehicle required, specialized vehicles and so on. Ms. Legrand, I think, may be able to give us a little bit of context on that.
The Van Poel transportation is for multiple students as well. I think, I'm not sure why it's just written differently. The one, top one, is for three. Van Poel transports to a number of programs where it could be a number of students going
I'm sorry, I meant the league school, the 194. Is that correct, saying one student?
This is the one in Walpo?
I believe that is actually tuition. That is not transportation, the league, unless I'm looking at the wrong one.
No, you're right.
The League School for Autism, that's their tuition for one out-of-district student, not the transportation cost.
Okay, so, and I know this is not the Lowell Public Schools situation, but so they, it's $200,000 a year for one student's tuition?
Yes. Yeah, they, we have program, there are programs in the state that go as high about $450,000 for one student as well.
Okay, and then just with the first two, the Devro and the Van Poel, that's just, I guess, degree of need for transportation of the student?
So, the top one, I'm just looking at it, is tuition as well. The second one, Van Poel, is transportation. It's three out-of-district students' tuition. I did not see that when we were looking the first time. Van Poel is multiple transportation for multiple students to, I couldn't find out where, but specific, multiple programs, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mr. Conway, you all set?
Yeah, just a few questions here. On the Project Wayfinder Incorporated, $100,000, it says, "Provide Tier 1 and 2 of social-emotional learning curriculum to all Lowell public school staff and students that are not open-circle schools." Could you explain that to me?
Certainly. Ms. Legrand?
Sure. We did a pilot in multiple schools last year to look at, we had to work on increasing our social-emotional tier-one interventions for students, as well as our anti-bullying program. And we have a partnership with the Department of Health that helps fund that as well. And so, we have added Wayfinder with the Department of Health as one of our options for schools that did not adopt open circle previously as part of their social-emotional learning and anti-bullying curriculum.
So, we couldn't, we couldn't deal with that inside?
So, we're required under this, if you remember, a few months ago, we updated our anti-bullying curriculum. It had been Anti-Bullying Intervention Plan, it had been since about 2016 or '17, I believe, since it had been updated, and one of the components that we needed to improve on was having an identified scientific-based, research-based bullying curriculum. It is also paid for by the DPH grant, Mass. Call 3.
Okay, so, we don't have administrators in the school system, whether it's at Central, whether it's school-wide, whether it's non-affiliated and so forth, that could handle this, that could do this? No?
Not, not that would meet the requirements of the grant.
Okay, all right. Go to, first of all, just a quick question here. I don't know if it's to you or not, Mr. Superintendent. On all these four pages, we follow the guidelines of the 30B of Mass. Law. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. On page 2, at the bottom, "Ignite Reading to Provide a Virtual Fundamental Reading Skills Program That Delivers Individualized Science of Reading Aligned. Tutoring Would Demonstrate Success in Accelerating Early Literacy Skills for $22,500." We don't have a staff that can do that?
So, Ignite Reading, Mr. Conway, is a Department of Education-approved tutoring program, where there are, so our students, in partial answer to your question, many of our students do receive tutoring. There's some specialized tutoring that the Department of Education has provided, funded for, provided by Ignite Reading. Again, it's not taken from the school department budget, in this case, it's from the Title 1 grant.
So, we don't pay any money on that? Is that correct?
Pay from the Title 1 funds.
Okay, all right. And on page 3, "Great Lowell Technical High School to Provide Instruction in Automotive Technology, Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning and Soforth." That's $224,375. Can you explain, can you explain that?
So, the gist of it is that many of our, we obviously don't offer these programs at Lowell High School, but they are offered at the vocational school. One of the arrangements that's been made in the recent six to 10 years is that several of our high school students are able to enroll in a vocational program that is essentially in the afternoon after the high school. They actually leave the high school a little bit earlier than the dismissal time. They take a bus to Great Lowell Vocational School, and then they're involved in these programs. From their involvement in these programs, they also qualify for certain certificates of competence in these different areas. And we do have to pay Great Lowell Technical High School for this service. It's referred to as an after-dark program, I believe, from my past understanding that it's very popular with the school committee.
How many students does it, excuse me, do they service?
It's somewhere, it was, I believe, last year, 24. I think this year, maybe as many as 40.
So, 40, so how much would that be per student? With my math, math guy here, can you just, so we get 40 students, is that correct?
That's correct.
And how much time are they actually being taught, should we say? A whole day?
Yeah, no, they're somewhere in the order of, I'm speaking very roughly, say, 2:30 PM to maybe 7:30 or 8:30 PM.
Okay. How much would, how much would that be per student?
So, unfortunately, I don't have the registration, like, the number of students in front of me, so I prefer not to anchor on a number, but if we were to figure as 40 students, it would be 5,600 per student.
So, additional $5,000 for each one of them.
Again, these are programs that we do not offer at our schools.
Here's one that caught my eye here, UMass Lowell. And, I mean, we have great partners with, you know, the business community, UMass, Middle Sex Community College and so forth, but this is to provide field trip admission fees for K-8 students to attend the Songus Industrial History Center Museum. I, that kind of lost me. I read that a half a dozen times, saying, "That doesn't make any sense." Where, where in, UMass is in Lowell, our school system is in Lowell, and they're charging us to bring our kids to the Songus Industrial Center Museum for a grand total of $56,360? Does that make any sense to anyone that, I mean, when you saw that figure, did somebody say, "Maybe we should have a sit-down with the, with the university and see if we can negotiate something like that"? Why, why are we given $56,000? That's what I don't understand.
We'd be happy, Mr. Conway, to get more information, if you'd like. I will say that as a long-term school principal in Lowell, and that this particular program is, it happened to be choosing ones that have been lobbied for and recommended highly by school committee members. And so, this is something that was introduced so every student in the district can have access to that museum.
Oh, I'm not saying, I think it's a wonderful idea, needless to say. It's a great opportunity for our kids to go to the museum. I'm just wondering why they're charging us $56,000 to go, go to the museum? Can we, can we investigate that a little bit further?
Certainly.
Perhaps we can hold off on that, on that item? And the other, the last thing is Middle Sex Community College. "To Provide Lowell High School with the Violence Prevention Peer Mediation Program Under the auspices of the Middle Sex Community College Law Center." And we're paying $35,000 for that? Can't, don't we have the ability to do that? I mean, we have, we have the safety, the SROs in our, our system. We have assistant principals in each one of our houses. We've got social workers, we've got support specialists, we've got guidance counselors, and we somehow can't combine forces and to come up with a program and save, and save $35,000 when they're, we already have these people on the payroll? Well, not all of them, the SROs, no. Does that make sense? To me, I said, "We have all this staff, and, and what we're doing is we're sending it out and paying Middle Sex Community College," and I'm sure they do a good job. But, you know, you've often said to me, to us, that we, we hire the best. Well, if we have the best at the table, why can't we put all those resources together and come up with a program and save $35,000?
It's a good question, Mr. Conway.
Maybe we could also check, check that one out, too, so that, you know, maybe we should rethink.
I can make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Only because, you know, these bills are already here in front of us, and maybe going forward in the future, Superintendent has heard some of the comments that you've made and not disagree with those at all. I know, for example, we pay a lot of money for graduation to the university at the Songus. We tried that years ago, to no avail. But I think, just for procedure-wise, and, you know, if I'm incorrect, maybe we just go into, just enter tonight, and then going forward, we can get some clarification on, you know, your suggestions, Mr. Conway, about, you know, doing things different ways in the future.
I, I agree with you, and we have to pay the bills now, we have to pay the bills, but the fact is, I think what we have to do is, I think we have to be more vigilant on the monies that we spend and not just throw it out. You know, when I take a look at a couple of the other things, and I'm not going to go into detail, but we've got to go to Berkeley, California, and then there's another one with, another place that we had for consultants and was another, Los Angeles, California. I'm saying to myself, "We don't have people that could take care of it here?" I think going forward, you know, and by the way, Mr. Mayor, we, we're going to be getting these, I believe, what, every month now? Is that what it is? So, we can, instead of waiting to the end of the year and have all of them, I think it'd be a good idea that we can get them in our hands. Was it, did we, are we going to have this on a monthly basis?
You do, you receive these at each meeting?
Every meeting, okay.
Every two weeks, you have these, yes.
All right. But are those, the ones that we're receiving every, every two weeks, are those ones that we, that it's already been finished, like this here?
Okay.
I'd like to get them before we get into the contract.
Mr. Mayor, if I can explain a little bit, so, the school committee approved the funding, generally, in the school committee budget, when we, when we did our budget work. Now, we're about to spend the funds, and we want to enter into a contract with the company. We will not enter the contract until you approve it, Mr. Conway. So, none of these, you know, while the mayor is correct that this is already in the works, and it will be difficult and disruptive if we don't approve them, but the committee is absolutely entitled to withhold approval for any of these contracts that you don't see fit to, to approve.
I see. But going forward, I think that, again, we have to be careful how we spend the taxpayers' money.
Mr. Conway, if I may, right? I'm, I'm agreeing with you.
And you, and you are, well, the fact is, you're, you're the one that's making recommendations, right?
That's right. That's right. So, Mr. Conway, the point, I think, for all school committee members to understand, I believe, is, unless you want to do things differently, the process is such that we don't spend the money till you approve it. You're asking questions tonight, Mr. Conway, about these items. That's absolutely the right thing to do. And so, if the school committee, based on the conversations we've had, don't feel that some of these expenses are warranted, you should withhold approval for them. That's the process. In other words, it's not...
Mrs. Superintendent, I, I get that. You've said that three times. What I'm saying, and the mayor just said it, too, is going forward, we have to be vigilant with monies, so that you're the one that makes recommendations to say, "Listen, in a program that we had last year that cost $40,000 or whatever, you know, we sat down with the team, and we figured out a way that we can save the $40,000 by doing it in-house." That's what I'm talking about. That's, this isn't brain surgery.
Right. When you say going forward, Mr. Conway, I'm just reasserting that going forward should be just like in the past. There's no difference in the process. We'll bring these to you each and every meeting, and you get to choose whether to approve them or not. That, that is the process that we follow.
I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
All right, roll, Madam Clerk. Yes, just like I said.
Just want to go back to Great Lowell Tech High School. It's a minor thing. I thought, when I read that, I thought we got, you know, to provide instruction for students from Great Lowell Tech to LHS after school. I thought it's the other way around. I thought...
Yeah, it's a typo.
So, it's just a typo, like, to and from, that's, and also, another question is, many years ago, when I worked with Robyn Desmond on, on this program, I remember she was mentioning to me that this program is extra, is a grant that we got from the state, so it's not coming out of the school budget. So, just want to make clear that that is the case that we have now, or...
For which one, Mr. Lay?
The, the Great Lowell Tech High School, the one on the top, on 33.
It does state that it's provided by a school department budget.
It, but Mr. Lay is also correct, Mr. Mayor, is the state gives us funding for the after-dark program.
State gives you most of the funding budget, right?
That's right.
Mr. Bahu?
Abstain.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty? Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Five days, one abstain, one absence.
Section 5 memorials, 5.1, Constance Desault, grandmother of Pine Arts Principal Lori Lang, and great-grandmother of Daily Middle School Special Education Teacher Timothy Lang. And 5.2, Lisa Ryder, retired Moody Elementary School professional. Madam Clerk, continue, lights. May the rest in peace. Six motions by Mr. Bahu, 6.1, request of proper department, look at the enrollment numbers of all K-8 schools, and if schools are less than 105% capacity, to give students priority with siblings at those schools or live locally to the requested schools, some consideration of attending that requested school. Seconded by Mr. Lay, Mr. Bahu.
Yes, so, I realize that we have a protocol for parents to enroll their students into our schools. And that protocol has been in service for a bit, since 2021, when it was last updated. But some parents seem to have hardships. In the hardships, I've, I got a call from one, one woman who basically works in Manchester, New Hampshire, and she has one middle-schooler at the Stark Losa and another middle-schooler at the Wang. And unfortunately, she's not able to get the student to the Wang, simply because of the Wang starting so late, and her and she having to get on the highway very early in the morning, but she can drop off the student at the Stark Losa. So, you know, she's a woman with four children, she's a woman that has a deceased husband, so it's, you know, it, it's very difficult for her to go ahead and bring her students to school. She lives about 3/4 of a mile from the Wang School, so there is no transportation offered to her, and she is even choosing to look at private schools, or the student hasn't come to school yet this year. So, you know, this is not healthy for the student, it is not healthy for the parent, it is not healthy for anyone. Another parent who lives close to a school said, "Fred, I could drop my student off at school, which is about, I don't know, half a mile from my house, but, but, but you're choosing to bus my student three miles up the road, and I don't necessarily want my student in the bus for 35, 40 minutes on a one-way trip, if it's good weather, maybe longer if it's, you know, bad weather." So, I'm hoping that we can begin to identify that there are hardships with many of our parents, and I know that we need to sort of have a, have everybody enter the lottery and the citywide schools, and there's not enough room at school A, B, or C, but I don't know if they're all fully occupied. So, I'm pretty sure that if we, and I'm asking for an extra 5% capacity, if a parent has a real hardship, maybe the administration can begin to go ahead and work with the parent to allow that student in that said school based on hardships, and it would be on a per situation basis. But I think it's a good place to start. I know that our Family Resource Center has their hands tied on this. They have to follow protocol, it's sort of, you know, the chain of command and how it works. But unfortunately, this situation just keeps on arising, and there's something that we should do in order to prevent it. As a matter of fact, you know, another parent called me, said, "Hey, I'm all set. I'm sending my child to a private school. I had to do a budget, I had to make some cuts, and that's what I'm choosing to do, as much as I've been living in Lowell and in the same house for five years. And now, all of a sudden, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of being pushed off to the side, and I've been working on this with the school administration since March." So, you know, there's a frustrating thing going on here with the parents, and it's something that we really need to go ahead and address. So, if the school committee could go ahead and approve this motion, I think it would be a great place to start, to start looking at our policy.
I agree with the motion. The only concern, I think, is we're bordering on neighborhood schools again, which, you know, I think some of us would be all for, others may not be.
Mr. Superintendent, is there a way to, I guess, quantify over the years, the, that's the word I'm looking for, the, what schools have done in the different districts, you know, either grades-wise or, you know, education-wise, you know, students' performance, performance is the word I'm looking for, you know, to, before we even venture into this area again. I mean, we tried to bring forward a transportation plan that would stop buses from going over the bridges and, you know, the place was packed and people were yelling and screaming. So, you know, I think Mr. Bahu's motion is worthy to, you know, for response, but is there a way to, not to justify going to neighborhood schools, but just to look at the, again, performances of the schools district-wide, each individually, to see if it's even a remote possibility?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Mr. Bahu. I think it's a, it's a very welcome and timely motion, in part because it's been done in the fall. It's, it's a complex chore to, to tweak the policy in a way that doesn't cause chaos summer, so we'd like some time with it. And we have lots of runway right now between, and have it be proposed to the school committee ahead of next spring, going forward. But, so, Mr. Mayor, we, we, we can look at other models. My suggestion would be that we take the, the motion if it passes and that we study it closely and we come back to the committee with some options and the committee can choose which, which options they'd like to go with.
I mean, there's no question, I'm sure the most popular phone call every member of the school committee gets every summer is, I want my kid going to school A, B, or C, right? You know, and that-
That's right.
If there's a way to, I guess-
So, Mr. Mayor, thanks for saying that. I, and I, of course, received those calls as well. One of the things for the committee members to know, if we tweak this, the enrollment pattern so that some of the folks that Mr. Bahu referred to were able to be accommodated, there'll be somebody else out there that won't, right? It's a question of making choices.
Correct. Right, that's, I, I think, is a holistic approach to take a look. Is there even a remote possibility to look into, you know, what we used to do?
Agreed. Happy to do it.
Yeah. Mr. Bahu.
Um, you know, and, and as, as I know Mr. Bahu has said, as the superintendent said, these are very difficult conversations to have with families, with parents. And I have certainly had them and, and it's a real challenge. So I completely understand that. And I understand the frustration of parents who are in this situation and trying to get, you know, their, their children into a specific school for a very legitimate, you know, reason. And, and, and I wouldn't vote against this motion because it's just information gathering, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. But I will say for myself, you know, ensuring that our, our schools are desegregated is of primary importance to me. I include in that, you know, certainly racial diversity, but also economic diversity, which I think is a huge issue in our city. And ensuring that all of our schools have an equal representation of, you know, the, the wide variety of, of children and families that we're lucky to have here in our city. I don't think this is an effort to thwart that, so please, you know, understand that. But it's just the natural result of it. I mean, and that's why the consent decree was talking about kind of de facto segregation, that it wasn't an active, you know, kind of goal that the school department had set to segregate their schools. It was just a natural thing that happened based on the way our neighborhoods are and, and kind of the way housing is in our city. So, you know, the, the consent decree and our, our desegregation plan, the choice plan that we put in place here in the city, does serve what I believe is a much, is a higher purpose, which is why I support it. I, I appreciate the, um, the charm of, of doing this in this way, of trying to increase it to 105%. I get the, you know, I, I can understand that. I will only say that in a school like, say, the Daily, that's adding a full classroom to that school. So that's adding an additional teacher, that's adding an additional, maybe para, it's, you know, 30 extra spots, and I'm just guessing at the number, but, or estimating, I should say, rather than guessing. But, so, I mean, that's a, that's a big ask to put on a school, to take on an additional full classroom of students when there's no space for it. You know, our, our census is set, each one of these schools has a census based on their ability to serve those students. So just adding additional students into the mix, to me, doesn't, you know, it does that school a disservice and which over time would be a, a, a real challenge for the educators in, in those specific schools. So as I say, I am, you know, I, I am happy to vote in favor of this motion in terms of information gathering to see if there is a, a, a great new solution that I'm not aware of. But just to be clear that when, if a time came to make a policy change, I would be, I will always place the value of our desegregation order as one of my top priorities. Thank you.
Oh?
Sure. And I understand the segregation, this is not my intent by any means of imagination. I am not looking to change the district. Ultimately, what I'm doing is hearing the concerns of the parents and ultimately, again, one parent has a middle, two middle schoolers in two different schools. And I know part of the application process does say, do you have a sibling in that school? The answer is yes. There are some extreme hardships. As far as waiting until the spring to come up with some type of response, I don't know if that's necessarily fair. We're talking about a student that hasn't attended schools, that attended school this year. We're essentially, you know, putting that student behind the eight ball. And ultimately, if that student doesn't attend school, then their social skills are minimized, their education skills are minimized, what they're able to do in the long term is minimized. So this is something that really needs to be addressed because I'm not entirely sure that the overall process, the way that it is written, is really considering all of the parents. And yes, we don't want an extra 5% of students across the Daily School or the Sullivan School or the Pine Arts. But if their classrooms are below, in the sense that the first grade has, has 27 students and they have capacity for 27 students exactly, would it be worth it to add one more student? I don't know that that's going to have to add a para, I don't know that that's going to have to add a, another teacher. But it is something that we need to look in too because, because there are certain situations that, you know, we really need to try to address and keep the smear off of the school district when it comes to acceptance policies and lotteries and pools and such like that. So thank you for backing my motion. I appreciate any information that you can share. But again, if students aren't going to schools, then ultimately, you know, this is not looking good for our school district.
I think the only fear is, like you said, Mr. Bahu, one student becomes three, becomes 10, becomes 25, becomes 50, and then all of a sudden you're going to say, well, hey, you got my kid into this school, you got that kid into this school, now you can get my kid into this school. I, I think that's where the, the give and take is and, you know, if you can't do a holistic change, then, you know, you're better off just staying the way they are. But I'm looking forward to the response and hopefully there's some way of getting something done. Mr. Lay, anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I feel the same way too, that I always hear some cases that parents have difficulties bringing their children to two different schools and they couldn't get both of them to go to one school. So I, I, I heard that and it created some challenges for the parents. And what Mr. Bahu said makes some sense. I, I think, you know, if we could find a solution to help the family resource centers to, to, to deal with that kind of problem, I think it would be, would be great. But also, I'm agree with Ms. Martin that I wouldn't want to create the issue that would go against the consent decree. So, so I will support this motion for the information gathering also. Thank you.
Also, fear is AI, opposed motion passes. Moving on to section seven, reports to the superintendent, response to, response to a motion by Ms. Martin on July 16th, 2025, regarding federal withholding of education funding for Title I, II, III, and IV. Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, you know, obviously thank the administration for pulling this information together for us. You know, overall, looking at a, a federal cut of about $130,000, that's, that's much better than what had been kind of, you know, threatened, so that's certainly encouraging. I, I was just curious, Title, Title IV, could you just tell me what the, how that's actually, that 462, what's actually that being spent on? And I, I don't know if you can give me a list, but just in general.
Dr. Pinto, please.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. So some of the detail has been provided there in, in the table. So it's designed to increase enrichment programs in the arts, STEM, and physical education and promote student wellness initiatives, including social, emotional support.
Thank you for reading that to me. Can I ask, in our school district, exactly where has it been applied? Is that part of the after dark program? Is it part of the, the 21st century, like, I'm just trying to understand where it's actually being deployed.
Dr. Pinto?
Thanks, Ms. Martin. I can certainly collect that information from you.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
7.2, motion response by Ms. Martin on August 20th, 2025, regarding organization chart for Lowell Public Schools Central Office. Ms. Martin?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I would actually like to make a motion that this be referred to the Personnel Subcommittee.
By Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay, also fear is AI, opposed motion passes. 7.3, response from a motion by Mr. Rossi on June 11th, 2025, regarding operational status and maintenance needs of copy machines. Mr. Rossi?
Thank you for this very thorough report. I, I think the bigger things that I'm concerned about is that we are keeping Canon, I believe, is the company responsible for the copy machines, as it looks like, you know, we've had 42.9%, you know, parts replacements, there's been 65% of diagnostic codes saying malfunction, defective, and so forth. Again, customer service calls, 75% problem codes, 36. There's just a ton of issues. So I just want to make sure that we're keeping Canon true to their contract and that they're coming out to fix this, and it seems like they're coming out on time. But it's just, every time there's an issue, it holds a teacher back with the situation. And that's tough when you're trying to do things on your prep or when you have any free moment. Thank you.
7.4, motion response by Mr. Rossi from August 20th, 2025, regarding Lowell High School schedule information documents. Mr. Rossi?
Thank you. It looks like everything went really good, and so that's great to hear. Thank you.
All right. 7.5, motion response by Mr. Lay on June 11th, 2025, regarding science teaching positions at Lowell High School. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the report. When I put that motion in, there were a group of students who came and spoke with me that they were upset about a physics teacher being let go. And from what I read, it seemed like there was no such thing. So for me, it sounds like there's a conflict of information, what the students told me, different from what I'm being told by the, by the administrator.
Superintendent? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lay, it's meant to be careful to assert that we're giving you accurate information and we always do. Perhaps the distinction that we need to, or that you need to under, have in order to understand that, that the information you've been given, there's been no reduction in science positions at the high school, that's the information you've been given. It doesn't mean the, the exact same teachers that were there last year are back this year. So there might be a teacher who was at the high school last year, who is no longer at the high school and has been replaced by somebody else. The positions are the same, but we, we cannot report to you about specific personnel. We're not, we're not at liberty to do that.
That's fine. Thank you. I just want to, thank you. That's fine.
7.6, motion response from Mr. Bahu, February 7th, 2024, regarding Lowell Public Schools, Lowell High School Chapter 74 progress update. Mr. Bahu?
Sure. This is very exciting news. Thank you for this report. To have a long-term plan for the next three years of developing as many as five vocational Chapter 74 programs to help students who ultimately are not getting into vocational schools across the state, to help students want to attend school and leave our school with a certificate of employment as well as some co-op opportunities, and to give them some excitement and some direction of not necessarily having to go to college is a, a great direction that this school system is going into. I thank you for this report. I ask, as far as the ISSN program, something about the space, where is the space going to be located? Is it going to be in the, in the 1980s building that just reopened this week?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Bahu. Dr. Fox, are you able to answer a question?
I was gonna, I'm gonna attempt to answer the question, but I wanted to preface by saying I'm not sure I know which one is the 1980s building. But it is, the, the shift is going in from the library space, so the, the ISSN is going to be moving to the space that is in, is that the 1980s? The temporary library space. And so that, that's the shift, but I don't know if that's the 1980s building. It is? Okay. So it's, yes, so the answer to that is yes.
Yes. Perfect. That's great news. And as far as approval goes, it looks like we're waiting for approval on May 1, 2026 for the ISSN as well as the robotics. Are there many more steps prior to that? Because if we, if, you know, if Desi chooses, if they come in here and do an audit on April 17th and say, hey, you know, you don't have everything that you need, I don't know that we have a lot of recourse in those two weeks. So is there a step process of having approvals so that we know that everything is in line and going in the right direction? Are there other dates that we're satisfying the, the, the CTE inspection?
If I may, so, Mr. Bahu, I think the answer to your question is yes, there's a sequence of steps. We're taking all the steps and we are on track. It's also important, though, that at the very end, there's a last inspection that occurs, I believe, in June, and we believe we should be all set by then. But we have heard in other districts, including locally, where at the last minute, the program wasn't approved. So it's not approved until it's approved, and that would be, I, I believe, mid to late June of next year, to approval for a program that we'd like to begin in the fall.
Sure. So, you know, this is very exciting. It's lofty. It's, it's, we're moving in the right direction, but let's please, you know, stay on this so that we can go ahead and begin to have Chapter 74 programming for, of these five programs and even grow it beyond that. So thank you so much for the report. I appreciate all you've done.
7.7, elementary, middle school handbook updates. Questions, comments? Moving on, 7.8, FY26 budget update. Motion to accept the reports to the superintendent, 7.1 through 7.8, reports of progress by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Ms. Martin, also fear is AI, opposed motion passes. 7.9, permission to post position, the motion to approve and post the, is that?
I changed it. I don't know how you-
By Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Rossi. Questions or comments? Roll call, Alan Clark.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Darity? Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Six days, one absent.
All right. I'll complete the agenda and go back to the House, Superintendent. Okay? 7.10, request for home education, motion to approve home ed by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Darity?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Six days, one absent.
All right. Quickly heading back to 7.7, there were changes to the elementary, middle school handbook. There were updates, so I think we should probably take a vote to accept those updates. By Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Rossi. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Alan Clark.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Darity?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Six days, one absent.
Eight new businesses, 8.1, approval to accept and expend allocated FY26 awards. Motion approved by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call, Alan Clark.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Darity? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Darity? Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Six days, one absent.
8.2, request approval of LHS clubs and devices for 2026. Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Rossi. Questions or comments? Roll call, Alan Clark.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Darity? Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Six days, one absent.
Motion adjourned by Ms. Martin, Ms. Martin, go ahead.
Very quick, point of personal privilege, just a reminder that we did extend the period for committee members to complete their evaluation of the superintendent. If we could get those in as soon as possible, the plan will be that those will be presented at our next meeting at the third week in September. So just anyone who hasn't completed them yet, please get those into Mr. Hall's office. Thank you.
Thanks. Motion adjourned by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Also fierce AI, opposed motion passes. Good evening.[1752.71]